Call this meeting to order, and if everyone wants to please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. The United America to the Republic, which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Man, that delay.
It's like in church where people are like waiting right behind. Okay, so we have a few announcements. First of all, welcome, everyone. Good evening, and welcome to our June 4, 2024 Select Board Meeting. Some announcements this evening. An educational forum on scam and fraud protection will be held this Thursday at 10:30 here in Conference Room A. A complimentary lunch sponsored by Home Field Credit Union will follow. Please call the Senior Center at 508-839-9242 to reserve your spot. Silver Lake Beach opens on Saturday, June 15. Purchase your season pass at tinyurl.com/silverlakebeach. That information is probably up on the recreation site as well. And Grafton Recreation is now seeking vendors for their Collectibles Fair on September 7, 2024. Submit your application at tinyurl.com/collect24. Okay, so our first order of business is public hearing. And Mark, if you want to read the notice?
You're muted, Mark.
Sorry about that. I'm usually better at that team. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended, that an application has been made by Trevor and Rachel Holden of Holden Sunflower Shanty for all alcoholic beverages licenses general on premises. The premises located at 95 Weston Street, North Grafton, Massachusetts, 01536, is a fully outdoor establishment consisting of picnic tables within a fenced-in area, approximately 2,700 square feet for guests to sit, eat, and drink, and area just beyond the fencing to be licensed for private events such as birthday parties and the like. Additionally, the area just beyond the private events area located near the animal enclosure where additional seating is located is included in this application. Upon this application, the Grafton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 4, 2024, in Conference Room A of the Grafton Municipal Center at 30 Providence Road. Remote meeting participation will be available, and the meeting link will be posted on June 4, 2024 Agenda. The meeting begins at 7:00 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment. So with that, I move the board to vote to open the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And just, sorry, a note, we tonight will do roll call because we have Craig and Mark on Zoom. So roll call, Craig Dauphine?
Aye.
Mark Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Matt Ofton?
Aye.
Andy Jefferson?
Jefferson, aye.
And Foley, aye. So if we want to maybe invite someone from the Holden Establishment to come up and talk briefly about the application? If you can state your name and address and speak into the mic for everybody.
Trevor Holden, 18 Willard Street.
Rachel Holden, 94 Weston Street.
Welcome.
Good evening.
So just maybe tell us a little synopsis and kind of take it from there.
We are applying for our liquor license for Holden Sunflower Shanty, 95 Weston Street.
And it's beer and wine, is that right?
We are going for all alcohol.
All alcohol, okay.
For a couple of reasons.
And does the board first want to talk, or should we move on to public comment?
Generally speaking, I would go with the board's questions, and then, and then open it up to public comments, should the board want to.
Yep, Andy, Mr. Jefferson.
Could you guys elaborate on why you went for the all alcohol instead of the beer and wine?
Absolutely. A very popular item in today's day is a High Noon. It is a vodka seltzer, which you cannot obtain unless you have an all alcohol. Another reason is we're looking at our five-year plan. We have, we hope to have weddings at the farm or anything like that, and so we don't want to limit ourselves thinking of our future.
Follow-up on that?
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ofton, I want to call him first name.
I just wanted to recognize the work that you guys went through to get the special permit. I went there and read all the conditions and all of the various inputs that you got from lots and lots and lots of town entities, you know, neighbors, yourselves. So it was quite a process that you guys went through to sort of get here today. So I just, I want to thank you for going through that. I think we're in a, we're in a good, much better place today than we were a couple of years ago with uncertainty and, you know, really trying to help you guys out, but not really being able to do it in the way that we wanted to or the way that everybody was comfortable with. So I just, I thank you guys for following the process and hanging in with the town as we navigated through this whole process. This was new for everybody, all along, you know, all along. So I just, I'm really glad we're here today, having this hearing, with you guys having gone through and gotten your special permit. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quite the learning experience for everybody.
It was for us, too. And, you know, yeah, anyways, I'm just really grateful that we're here today and that some of the, some of the mechanical parts and the permitting and all that kind of stuff, it's been reviewed, it's been commented on, discussed, and now you guys have the special permit. So it's, it's a real positive thing as far as I'm concerned. One thing that, so I did have a quick discussion with Fiona today. She suggested that if we grant the license, that we should basically mirror the language that is in the special permit conditions, which is that any alcohol that's consumed has to be within the designated area, which is the sort of fenced-in area, so that we don't have people kind of walking around over to where the goat pens are and stuff like that. So just within that, the area where you guys have fenced in, if that makes sense, it's, it's in the special permit, so that we don't have people walking around out onto the street or anywhere else. And that made some sense to me.
Stating it's fenced in, correct? Because on the, on the application, we actually like outlined where we wanted it to be. And I mean, I'm not opposed to putting up fence if we have to to make it limited, but generally from even events that we have where we put the additional tent, people usually, you know what I mean, do have drinks out in that area. So if we had to put a fence up to keep people in that general area, we're open to doing that, but it was sort of open-ended in the.
And I believe the state comes, I mean.
And does like, yeah.
The site plan review, from what I've read.
Let me pull that up.
So this, sorry, if I can introduce that, the, the area like in red on the schematic?
Correct, yep. So it actually doesn't put them out at the road. It's right before the, the goat pen.
Right. And in the special permit, sorry, the language was?
Yep, just pawned it up.
Thanks. And if I can also just add, so, and you guys feel you can monitor that?
In that, within that area?
You know, making sure that people.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, generally, that's the area where all the stuff's, you know what I mean?
Yep. But just to make sure that you would monitor it, that they wouldn't.
Oh, yeah. And like Rachel said, they sort of come up and make sure that there's the entrance, the, you know, everything sort of in line.
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Um, yeah, Craig, well, Matt's looking for that, yep.
Yep.
Yeah, um, yeah. Usually when we grant the liquor license, there is, there is a designated area. It can or cannot coincide with what Matt was talking about with the, with the planning board decision, but there is going to be a designated area. So we have to make sure that it's agreed upon. Cause I just remember like from the, from the Legion post, when they started going out, out back to the pavilion, that's, that's a different area that they needed. I believe they had to either amend or somehow change to include that area because they weren't allowed to have alcohol out there because it wasn't inside the building. So we want to make sure if, if Trevor and Rachel want includes like where the swings are between where the, you know, where the picnic tables are and the, and the pen is, as far as, you know, being able to carry a beer up there or something, we should talk about that.
Madam Chair.
My, Matt, thank you.
Yeah, so Condition 7 says alcohol shall be consumed in designated eating and drinking areas on the site plan to the satisfaction of the Chief of Police, which includes the picnic table eating area and the intimate tent when assembled, that are enclosed by either a four-walled structure or enclosed with fencing and marked with the appropriate signage. So that's, that's the bit that, and it's similar to what I think what we did with the flea market, where we did ask them to enclose and make sure that it was properly signed and all that kind of stuff. So I think our license should come with that, that condition, to make sure that it's super clear.
And just so, like what I was saying before, just if, if that area that we're proposing to have it in is fenced in proper signage and so on and so forth, it's all right.
Yeah, and it says so in the condition. We were talking about that intimate tent?
Yep.
And that's the events tent, I think, that you guys were talking about. So you just need to have a plan for putting that up and making sure that it's, it's an enclosed area for consuming alcohol. That, that's all.
Right, right.
Yeah.
ABCC won't let it go through either without that fence.
Well, we were thinking it's just going to be one continuous fence in that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Red area.
Sure, yeah, whatever works for you guys and, and the chief.
Absolutely.
Yeah, makes sense. That's, well, I had one other thing.
Sure, go ahead.
I guess I was asked today to just consider an email that came as part of the, the special permit process, which was an email from council, which basically was talking about Chapter 40A subsection 3, which was agricultural uses and whatnot. And I just wanted to say that I sort of went through that whole, the reasoning for that, and that this was basically fed into the special permit process, that the reason that a special permit was needed at all was because there's no by right use for alcohol and other beverage use that is just with the agricultural zone. That has to be attached to the actual agricultural business that's being done. So you have to produce it there or, you know, with your own materials and that sort of stuff. So the, the whole reason that you guys went through the special permit process at all was because you needed that, that special permit from the planning board. So it's the town's right to ask you guys to do that, and you went ahead and did that. And here we are considering the, the license request. So, but it was something that somebody did reach out to me today to sort of look at, and I did do that. As far as I could read, everything is in order and, you know, it looked like the, the conditions in approval from the planning board was, was really clear and unanimous. So I had no concerns about that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Matt. Mark or Craig?
Uh, no, just Matt, where, somebody, just so I understand, somebody reached out to you today and asked you to investigate something for, for them, I guess, in regards to this public hearing?
Yeah, there was a memo that went to Planning. And this was from Harrington Heap. It was a part of the special permit process. And Fiona had asked for guidance on whether the town can require a special permit for alcohol beverage and a provision of live, live music in the form of a special permit. And the advice that came, so this was Chris Heap, so one of our, our town council. He just affirmed that it is the town's right to, to require a special permit, which is the process they went through.
Okay, which is based on the, on the bylaw amendment, amendment that happened last year?
Exactly, yep.
All right, just wanted to know where, where it came from. Quickly, while I have the floor, I guess, Evan, is, is all, all the submissions that, that the Holdens provided, is that, check all the boxes as far as?
Yes, it does. Yeah, we, we looked through it this afternoon again, just to, as we normally do before a liquor license hearing, and it, it seems to all be in order. It's also important to note that after the local licensing authority has a vote, it then goes to the ABCC who vets it as well. So.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Any other comments you want to make before, oh, sorry, Andy?
Madam Chair, thanks. I'm just, straight shooting, I'm not in favor of the all alcohol license. When this idea first came before the board, it was pitched as more of a beer garden that would feature local breweries, local products. I understand supplementing those with domestics like Bud. I understand expanding your market with some of those malt beverages. I'm not sure a full alcohol license justifies one particular type of drink. But, you know, this, an all alcohol license isn't what this project was originally pitched to us as. I'd be happy to grant one-day licenses for any events that you have that you need an all alcohol license for. I'm just not in favor of it every day.
That would still. Go ahead, Craig.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, Rachel wants to go.
Yeah, go ahead, Rachel.
So I'm pretty sure if we wanted to sell High Noons every weekend, we would have to come here every weekend for an all alcohol permit. Because when we, so when we order from our distributor, we, in the past, submit our one-day licenses. Moving forward, in the event that we hopefully get a liquor license, we will submit that one liquor license to them, and then we can order from them continuously throughout the year. I believe if we were to follow the way that you would like us to do so, we would need to come here every week to get a one-day permit for, for all alcohol in order to be able to order High Noons.
I would recommend leaving High Noon off your order. Provide a, but again, that's, this was not pitched as a High Noon dispensary. This was pitched as something that would feature local beers and, and is more of a beer and wine garden, which is what we're moving away from. I don't think that, personally, I mean, unless you can make a really great case for it, I don't think that that one beverage is gonna, is gonna make or break the situation. My comment would be that when you need the all alcohol for a, an event like a wedding or, you know, some type of reserved party, then we can grant those.
I respect your decision. However, I beg to differ. High Noons are very popular.
Madam Chair?
Yep, Craig?
Um, yeah, so just in response to that, I guess, I'm happy the Holdens are here. Anything we can do to help that establishment grow and prosper? We certainly want to do that. They've, they've done a great job to date, I think, operating the shanty. You know, like all businesses, they, they evolve, they grow or they die. So this is, as Andy said, it might have started out as kind of a beer and wine type of venue. We have liquor license, full liquor licenses available. They're sitting on the shelf, not doing anybody any good. And for people that want to have a High Noon, a vodka soda, whatever, I think adding that is, is not gonna, not gonna impact anything but, but make, make the Holden's facility up there and business and operation prosper greater. So I don't see any legitimate reason to hold that up. So I'm glad that there, the business is evolving and it's going to continue to evolve and hopefully have some weddings and some bridal showers and some first communions or whatever happens up there happens, and people will enjoy the farm and the shanty. And I think whatever we can do to help, we want it, we want to be able to continue to do that as that business hopefully grows for many, many years. Thank you.
Trevor, did you want to say something? Thanks, Craig.
Um, I was just simply going to say, even from the beginning of the special permit process, we sort of proposed one thing and had got advice or suggested different routes and avenues and sort of pushed us to even have the thought of a venue, weddings, anything like that. So I think it's more or less covering, covering all our bases. It's, it's, so then three, four years down the road, we don't have to come back in. I'm not looking to, even though I love all you guys and love coming in and seeing you guys, but I'd love to be able to just move on and, and grow and do what we do. So.
And I'm pretty sure that once you have a liquor license, you can't apply for one days on the same property under the same business.
Makes sense, yeah. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Just on that point, I hear what you're saying, Andy. But I do think, I don't hear anything that's incompatible with what they're trying to do. They're gonna have to sort of manage to safely serve people, whatever they're gonna offer there. And I don't, I don't see a, a big difference, honestly, what people are consuming. It's, it's alcohol, whether it's a beer or it's a mixed drink. They're gonna have to manage the, you know, the environment so that people are drinking safely and they have their noise restrictions, they have their lighting restrictions, they have the amount of people that can be there, there are parking restrictions. I mean, there's, there's such a variety of.
I think almost every restriction.
Well, and you know, there's a reason for that, right?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
It's all, it's all important. I, for, well, for me, I don't, I don't see that this as another restriction that's gonna be that meaningful in terms of, yeah, something that's gonna improve safety or it's something that really is, is in the town's interests. And I, so, and as much as I love seeing Trevor and Rachel, you know, it would be good if we could get back to doing other business as a board and let, let these folks get on with doing their business as a business. So I'll shut up.
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes, Mark?
Yeah, I think it's, that's the, that's the key point right there, is managing to the restrictions. That's it. The other part of it, I'm with Matt on this, I'm with Craig on this. I think it's an expansion, maybe a little bit beyond, but that's, it's, it's a fair point to suggest or to know that businesses do evolve, business models evolve, and that's a good thing, and we do need that. But we also very much need to manage to those restrictions, particularly the sound ones, the sound restrictions. That'd be great. That'd be great. So, but yes, I can confirm with Rachel, that is true. Those are very popular. Not my thing, not my thing, but there's no question that they rival at this stage of the game, you know, from a business perspective, those, that product rivals craft beer at this point.
It sure does. Anyone else on the board?
Um, I'll just say that, you know, today we did confirm with Evan and council that all of your i's were dotted and your t's were crossed, so that's great. The application that we have before us, we can all feel assured that everything that needs to be in there is in there. I think it's important that you do mind the area, make sure that, you know, the signage is there and whatnot, and that you're watching that while you're working. And then to someone's point about just, you know, managing, obviously, this isn't a music license, but managing that whole thing, right? The whole big picture, so that hopefully everyone can, can live harmonious, in harmony up there. And I, I, I understand, I can hear what you're saying, Andy, that certainly this is a pivot, but I'm assuming that you're probably not looking to pour a lot, you're just getting the, the cans. So even though it's, it's, it does change it to an all alcohol, it's a little bit different than the full, you know, pour bar.
Pouring, right.
All right, without any other comments from the board, anything else from the Holdens before we open this up to the public?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so we'll open this up to anyone in the public that wants to come up and speak to this. Nancy, if you could just come to the mic, state your name and your address. And then William, you'll let me know if there's anyone on Zoom?
Yep.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Nancy Peller, 3 High Point Drive. I might just want the board to be aware of an incident that happened to a very close friend of mine in February, outside of the Townhouse Tavern. Both Trevor and his brother Tyler and another person attacked somebody, and one of them, they were holding him down. There's a police report. I have the police report with me. I don't want to, I don't want to go into the details because I don't want to misquote anything that's already on paper. And the other thing is at the back of each packet, there's the summons to court, which the court case has been delayed, so it's not proceeding, I guess, until next week sometime. But it is interesting that in the picture of the arrest report, it is a picture of Trevor, and it is Tyler's name that got arrested for assault and battery with serious bodily injury. And I know he lives on the property, is also married to Rachel. So I just wanted the board to be aware of this incident. There has been no result from court, or I would have brought a printed result. This is just the two police officers' reports and the arrest report with, unfortunately, Trevor, Tucker Holden's picture. It could be a mistake by GPD. I have no idea why. I just asked public record, and this is what I received. I have a copy for everybody if you want, and that's all I have to say. I, you know, I've supported the Holdens all throughout this. But I'm aware of another incident that I'm not going to speak of that happened during business hours on the farm, and I don't think that they deserve a liquor license if Trevor and Tyler are involved. So that's all I have to say. If I could hand this to.
Sure, I'll take it.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Nancy.
Anyone else in the audience? And William, do we have any comment?
There are no hands on Zoom.
Okay, so I will take a motion?
Okay, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call vote, Craig Dauphine?
Dauphine, aye.
Mark Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Matt Ofton?
Ofton, aye.
Andy Jefferson?
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye. I declare the motion passed, and we will move on.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Alamo?
I move the board vote to approve a general on-premises all alcohol beverages license for Trevor Holden and Rachel Holden of Holden Sunflower Shanty located at 95 Weston Street, and sign the licensing authority certificate.
Second.
Any discussion? Further discussion? Craig?
Yes, just one comment. You know, we're, we're upping the bar. This is, I guess, for Rachel and for Trevor. We're, we're raising the bar up there, and we all believe in the farm, we believe in the shanty. Hearing things like Nancy brought up, you know, gives concern, right? You're going from a beer and wine to a full liquor license. And as much as we support what you guys are doing up there, this raises the bar as far as responsibility. So I just hope that you think about that. The town does sting operations, I'm sure you're aware of that. You guys have operated a beer and wine license for a few years now. It's a lot of responsibility to have a liquor license. Please take it seriously. Please monitor the, you know, what's going on up there as far as who you're serving and how much you're serving. Because the, you know, the chief, the police department in the town will be watching. So we all want you to be successful, but we want you to realize what that license brings as far as responsibility goes. So something that we said for years to, to, to people that were getting licenses, and I think it holds true today. So best of luck, and look forward to going up there and seeing the farm be successful.
Thank you. Thanks, Craig. I definitely mirror that thought. Any other discussion?
So I'm not on the board, but if I could, I just want to clarify one thing. So given what we were just discussing, the ABCC is the one that does the criminal background check and all the rest of it. So board, this board and. So board, the, this board and, and the town doesn't vet that. That's the ABCC's responsibility. So just clarifying how that process works.
Perfect. Okay. Ready to move to a vote? Craig Daughney?
Daughney, aye.
Mark Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Matt Ofton?
Ofton, aye.
Andy Jefferson?
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye. The motion carries four to one. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So appointments, select board, we have none. Appointments, town administrator, fire chief, none. Moving on to new business. So we're considering a vote to extend the intermunicipal agreement for animal control services.
Correct. So this is just an extension of what we've already been doing. And it's been working pretty well for us. So I would recommend that we, we stay with what we're, what we're doing now.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Alamo.
I move the board vote to extend the intermunicipal agreement for animal control and animal inspector services among the towns of Westboro, Grafton and Shrewsbury for a one-year period ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? A roll call. Craig Daughney?
Daughney, aye.
Mark Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Matt Ofton?
Ofton, aye.
Andy Jefferson?
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
I'm doing your full names because I don't know the mister and the missus thing. Maybe we could talk about first names.
You, uh, the chair, so you.
Call you whatever I want.
Addresses however you, however you would like.
Okay, then. Okay, moving on. So we're gonna, this was an item that I wanted to bring up, reviewing the board and committee annual appointment process. So if you don't mind, I might just tee this off. So essentially, I'm not, I wasn't thinking of any changes, obviously, in the next seven days before we do this. But I thought that maybe we could just look at the current policy and have a, a bit of a discussion about some items on there. And then I just also wanted to clarify, I've had folks reach out to me last year and now again this year about, do I have to come? Do I have to be in person? You know, if no one else is, is, if it's like a, a non-issue in terms of the number of people that are running. So I just wanted to, I went through this and just kind of highlight a couple of things. But one was, we talked a little bit earlier, but on item five, that generally, that we would let folks know at their next regularly scheduled meeting. I'm not sure that we have been doing that. We've been doing it straight away and it's convenient for candy, but I'm just kind of throwing that out there. If we want to change that or if we want to stick with the policy. And then in terms of people coming or not, I went through it and at some point it, it indicated that they did not. And I'll just have to see where.
I, I think if they're already on a committee, Emery, that they don't have to come. I think if they're a newly appointed person, even if there isn't, a quorum, say, or, or, or say, or a full committee, I think that they should come in. But if they're, if they're just up for a reappointment, they don't need to come in. I think that's how it reads. For new appointees, I think we want them to come in.
Yeah, and the, the, if I could just, we'll just jump in, but the new appointee process, I understand, you know, having folks come in if they've never been on a board before and introduce themselves and so on and so forth, even if they are not, you know, they're running unopposed, so to speak. I just wanted to clarify that those couple of things. So who's coming in? And if you're currently in the position and not having any opposition, are you meant to come in or do you have to be via Zoom? And then again, do we want to do this all, tidy this all up that night with making the appointments? Or do we want to push that off a week where sometimes it won't be an issue. But if there are people that are going against each other, then maybe it's more comfortable to do it after the fact. And then I, the other thing, just while we're at it, is the Grafton news. Are we doing that quarterly, throwing that in there?
Uh, yes, we are.
Oh, okay.
Yep. I thought we were going somewhere else with that. That's what I was already thinking about.
Okay.
Yeah, we are.
So any other feedback on the policy currently or?
Yeah. Madam Chair.
Mr. Alamo.
Yeah, just as a point of reference, it's probably unnecessary for an incumbent volunteer to come in. But I kind of, I might be outnumbered on this thing, but I, I don't mind the idea of any individual, whether it's new or a reappointment, at least showing up on Zoom and saying, hi, my name is so-and-so. I've done this for three years. This is what I'd like to do. I, I like doing it. I think I'm good at it and this is the reason why I want to continue. And for a new appointee, I'd love to see that individual, again, Zoom is cool for me because everybody's, it just makes it easier for people. In person is always a little bit better if you can do it. But the reality is, I, I think it's good for someone to say, this is who I am and this is what I like to do and this is why. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, particularly if we offer the option of Zoom. Again, I might be outnumbered, but I think it's a good idea.
Nope, that's okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I sort of agree with what Mark said. I like to see people doing appointments as a, one of our, you know, it's a really important responsibility for the board. And while we don't always want to, you know, necessarily explore the membership of, of a particular board or committee, having the option to do that when, when we wish to, to speak to members about how their, you know, board time is going, making sure that they're still interested and whatnot. I, I think it's, it just makes sense to me that we would leave ourselves open to that. And, you know, the past couple of years have gone pretty quick. So, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask people to hang out for 30 minutes or whatever while we go through the process. So I, I sort of, I, I hear what you're saying where. Well, anyways, so.
Yeah.
I, I sort of like the policy as it is. So I'm not sure that I would change the whole lot, but.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Craig?
Um, just a couple of things to, just a thought that came to my mind when, when Mark and Matt were speaking is what would be nice, I don't necessarily, if it's just a reappointment, to have them come in. I mean, if they want to come in or they can. But what I think there's more value in is, is doing, you know, kind of during the summer into the fall before we start budget discussions is have some of these committees come in. You know, we appoint a lot of committees and we don't communicate with them on a regular basis unless we run into them at the grocery store or something. So something we did years ago that I think was really fruitful is we would, you know, try and put one, one or two committee members on a, you know, depending on how, how full the agenda was and have, you know, have a committee come in that we appoint and just give us an update and have a discussion. Sometimes good ideas come from that. Sometimes we can give them some, some goals or, or, you know, just having that conversation can be, can be productive. So, and I think they like to come in and, you know, tell us about their work and, and have a discussion about what they've been doing. So I would rather see them take the time to come in then as a committee. If they're just reappointments, love to see them but don't have to see them. If it's somebody that's new, that's never served on a committee and there's an open slot, you know, we can make the appointment, but it's good to have them come in so we can meet them. We know who they are by face and they can, they can have the floor if they wish. So just, just a thought there. As far as, I, I read through the, the appointments. I mean, to me, you know, if, 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 if a committee is full and everybody that's up for reappointment wants to be reappointed, let's just reappoint those people unless they're not showing up to meetings or in subordinate, there's some behavior that's going on that, that we don't feel like, you know, we want to continue having them on that committee. Other than that, it's hard to get volunteers. Let's reappoint people. There's plenty of openings for, you know, if there's other people that want to serve, they can find a committee certainly to serve on. So I'm not open to having, you know, having to view to stay on an appointed committee. Let's not put appointed people through that. Number five on this, the board, the select board will not seek the input of, of the applicant board or committee. So that's under the new appointment section. So I think it's important, we're not serving with these people in general, right? So like there are committees that we appoint that there's not a selectmen's rep on. So I think if, I think input, I think if, if there's people that, you know, they have some input on who they want to serve with. I mean, I would make it optional, but if they want to send in a comment, even as an individual committee or board member to say, hey, this person would be good or I have concerns, and then we can vet it, you know, to make sure it's not, you know, a political, you know, opinion. It's, you know, it's, it's in good faith. Because we want all our committee members to serve with other good people. We want it to serve with people that they kind of, you know, enjoy being with, right? Because committee work is volunteer work and we want to make it as, as, you know, as, as fun as possible, I guess, fun for lack of a better word. So I think we should be open to accepting a letter or a phone call from a board on an applicant. And we certainly want to know if, if committee members are not showing up to meetings, if they're missing, you know, if they miss 10 out of 12 meetings. Well, you know, maybe we have to have a conversation with that person and say, listen, if you want to serve, you got to be there. If you can't be there, then, then resign and we'll find somebody who can, you know. Just kind of logical, common sense stuff. So those are my, those are a couple of my, my thoughts. I know this is going to continue. You know, this one, not, obviously there's no vote tonight on this, but a couple of thoughts on, on reappointments and an input from, from, from committee members. But I'm not interested in seeing good people kicked off a committee just because somebody else applied and, and going through that process. I think that's, you know, it's a bad policy and it's bad for the town.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Andy.
Um, I agree with some of what was said throughout those, those two statements. I'm with Mr. Alamo that I like when people come in. I would like for, right, I mean, I think it's important that the new people come in and, and make themselves available to answer questions and, and, you know, there's effort that needs to come in, in why you're applying for something and some follow-through. I like the idea of offering the same opportunity to the people currently serving in case there's, you know, questions or discussion that arise. They're there to, you know, be equally represented. Whether that's over, you know, in person or over Zoom, I think either is, is, is fine and acceptable. I, I like the idea of bringing in committees more periodically.
Yeah.
So that we can have those types of check-ins and whatnot. I don't think that serving on a committee should just be a rubber stamp to continue serving on that committee. I think it can certainly be weighted in individual decisions. But, you know, I think if, if people come in and they have a, a new interest or some new vigor, that, that can be good for a committee. You know, and, and I know we're elected, but it also follows similar trends that, you know, that, that sometimes there's just, there's turnover. And, you know, you, you want something different. As far as whether we make the appointment that night or wait until the next meeting, I don't really have any strong feelings on that. You know, right now I think I'm kind of in the camp of just, we're going to be there. We're, we're going to have to discuss the person at some point, whether they're sitting in the room or I guess whether they're potentially watching from home. You know, I, I, it might be easier to just kind of rip the Band-Aid off, take the vote and get on to that next step. But I'm not opposed to letting it, you know, kind of simmer for a little bit and giving people an opportunity to think, so.
Okay, thank you. I did find that, the, the point that, so, yeah, so that's, I guess, here just as says, we're generally being, make, making at the next regular scheduled meeting. So maybe we can change that to, you know, offer us either or. But it's, it's like on the last page, any interested applicant who responds in the affirmative to this invitation must be present to be considered for appointment or reappointment. So I think that was one of the points that I just wanted to clarify because again, I have folks reaching out to me asking if they're on boards and no one's, you know, it's, they're the only one coming up. Do I have to come in next week and?
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
To that point, and maybe it's just a change in the way we communicate the levels of interest back. Once we have that completed list, if it was a non-contested seat, I don't think somebody has to come in and.
If it's a reappointment, yeah.
Right. But if we have multiple people vying for limited seats.
Yes.
That's the situation where I, where I'd like to see people.
Agree with that.
Okay, so maybe we can tighten that up.
I'd agree with that.
In the language. That's, that's what I was thinking. So again, it, it is clear on the new appointments that they should come in. And then it's just a matter of someone who's out there who, and will encourage them to come in, but if they're on vacation, they're not going to get kicked off the committee, I guess, is what people are thinking.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Reasonable.
Yeah.
I've also been telling all the seniors that they don't have to come because they were in my office.
Oh, yeah.
Rapidly. So they're exempt, just so you know. I know it doesn't say it in the policy. Got me out of hot water.
Was it Craig?
Yeah. No, just to Andy's point, I guess I don't understand why, I would, I would ask Andy to put himself in, in, in somebody's shoes that's, that was appointed to a committee. They've been there for three years. They've been there for 10 years. They've been there for 15 years. And they've done good work and they have historical knowledge and they have experience and they have. And then all of a sudden, somebody applies and then they get, they don't get reappointed. I mean, that, that's a terrible thing to put somebody through in our community and I don't know why you would ever want to do that unless there was something wrong. Like I said, they weren't showing up at meetings. They were in subordinate or something. I mean, how are you going to get people to continue to volunteer for committees if after three years or five years after doing good work, all of a sudden you pick somebody else over them? I mean, that just sends a very bad message. I can't support that for our, for our own residents in Grafton that come, that step forward in good faith, we appoint them. If they want to continue doing that work, if their passion is whatever that committee is, why would we want to lose that? It's just, it's just, it's just a terrible policy and it sends a bad message.
If I can just speak to that, I'm not sure that that's inherent in the policy. That's kind of just more how we would look at the applicants when they came. I don't think there's, there's, I know there's nothing in here.
You're allowing people to, to apply when, when there's, when there's three people, there's a full committee and say there's two or three people that are up for reappointment that want to be reappointed. And then you have somebody apply for that committee, which they know is full, and then we interview them and start selecting people. That's what's been going on.
Okay. So I see what you mean. So we're, we're advertising that there's an opening person.
If there's an opening, they're welcome.
That's expiring terms, so. So just under none, number three, reappointments, it says the select board at its, at its discretion may elect not to reappoint a member of a committee with an expiring term. I think that just, it is what it is.
Madam Chair.
Andy.
You know, respectfully, I think Mr. Daughney is making an assumption that, that dismissal would be done for, for reasons other than something that we feel is justified. It's a five-member vote. Everybody has to feel a particular way about nominating somebody. And I believe honestly that there was a meeting, an appointment meeting you served on previously where you stated to the public that we don't need to give a reason why we choose to appoint or not reappoint people. So I, I, I guess, I guess you're, you're, you're just making an assumption that, that the appointment process is going to be purely political and not based on the same criteria that you just outlined.
Well, that's what it's been the last couple of years and, and it needs to go away.
Okay. So I'm going to cut it off. I think that this policy as it stands does not, it's, it's fine in that respect. It will come to a five-person vote for whatever reasons, hopefully justified based on the person, their experience, et cetera. That's kind of a separate issue slash conversation. Uh, but I think that in, in respect to this issue that you're both speaking to, I think that, that our policy is, is fine. I just, so I, I think we've got some ideas. We might maybe just tighten it up a little bit that, like I said, that number six to let people know that there might be exceptions if they don't want to come in at night, et cetera. Or these, that's under reappointments, right? And then is there any feedback, Evan, from your office on this policy?
Yes, I, I don't have it all mapped out in front of me. But if you are going to open up the policy, I would just request that staff are able to take a look at the timeline and just give feedback to the board about what's been working and what might need to be refined.
Okay, so maybe we can do that. Folks can look at it a little bit more. And I don't think it, we're not looking at a big change as ace, but just, I thought it would be valuable, given that it's coming up. I meant to look at this over the last year and here we are and it's reappointment time again. Colleen, did you have your hand up? Do you want to come up?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, just quickly, I want to respond to Craig's.
Yep, sorry, Matt.
Comment on not seeking input from applicable boards and committees. That.
Not seeking um, input from applicable boards and committees. Um, that that. When I read through this, that did seem a little bit harsh. Um, and I think. Um, one change that we could consider is to just give ourselves the option. Yeah, well, to to just say that we may or may not.
Yeah, I just wrote, uh, the select board may seek the input from the applicable board or committee.
Yeah, um, yeah, so that's fine, uh, because here we're sort of saying we're definitely not gonna do it.
Yeah.
And I think there may be circumstances where we actually do want to, so I um, I take your point, Greg, and I think we just make that small adjustment.
Thanks, man.
Okay, so Colleen and William, you have your hand up.
Okay, uh, Colleen Roy, fifty-three Almond Street. So the part where we guys invite people in for the appointment or reappointment. The spirit in which that made it into the policy was over a couple of years, there were people applying to say, I wanna get on. They confirmed with Cindy, I'm coming. They don't show up, we appoint them and then they ghost us and we never hear from them again. So that's how it made it in the policy to begin with. And we have over the years made exceptions for people that can't drive at night or don't wanna be here and they, as long as they're communicating that with the board, those exceptions have been made, but I just wanted to. Maybe remind people who weren't around for that time. That's that's how it made it into the policy, that that part of it.
Okay, thank you. And I agree. I mean, I I think that's what I'm trying to state is that for reappointments. Come on in, or if you can't come in, we're not gonna kick you off because you can't get here. Um, William?
I just wanna let you know you do have a hand on some.
Okay, thank you. I can't see the.
Uh, it is Ed Prisby. I will allow him to talk.
Okay, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Prisby.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, great. Um, so I just, I've had some experience with this myself and I think Colleen's points are well taken. I think one of the things that we. Thought about uh, when this policy was revisited a couple of years ago was the extent to which certain people were sort of squatting on positions. And the groups became kind of clicky. Um, and that can become a barrier to entry for other people. And I think it's always good, you know, as an as a natural roundabout to have people come back in and say, hey, listen. You know, my name's Ed Prisby. I've been on the Affordable Housing Trust for a number of years. Here's what we're doing. And to have somebody actually ask, you know, hey, well, you know, you you missed five of the last six meetings. Um, do you wanna still do this stuff? And if there are other people who are interested, and even if there aren't. To say, you know, these are our expectations going forward for these committees because a lot of them do mean something. And we get committees like, you know, Craig's probably upset about CPC. And, you know, there was a hard stance taken about that a couple of years ago and some new people wanted to get on. And there is nothing wrong with that. That's perfectly fine. And I would remind Craig. That it was Craig who said that, you know, in twenty fifteen, when I was escorted off of the Affordable Housing Trust. That he said this board has a responsibility to appoint people to it that reflect its values and if you have people. On the committees who aren't, you know, uh, doing their job, then, you know, eh, this is your opportunity. To make sure that output from these committees are maximized because they actually do have. Real value and often cases, real authority and in some specific cases, real authority over money. And that matters to taxpayers and it's your role to make sure those spots are filled efficiently and appropriately. And as unpleasant as that may be, um, as so long as these people have noticed, and I didn't have noticed, by the way. That this discussion is taking place and they have the opportunity to show up and. Give their case, then it's perfectly fine for you to say, come on in, come on in by Zoom or come on in by in person.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, thank you um, for. Going through this all. Um, I will say that I agree with Mr. Prisby in that for me, the committees are extremely important. And a lot of work is done there and I wanna make sure that, you know, we're crystal clear with folks in terms of. Reappointments and coming in and so on and so forth and just making sure that this policy that we all feel good about it, that it's fair, equitable, et cetera. Um, so for anyone listening at home that has applied to a position uh, for next week, if you are. Getting reappointed, we would love to have you come in, but if there's some reason that you cannot, particularly if you are running unopposed, um, we will note that. Okay, barring any other discussion.
One last note.
Sure.
Um. Oh, and then the train just left.
That's okay.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I was muted. Um, ju- just just one follow up.
Yes, Craig, I'm recognizing you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Um, when uh.
I mean, Mr. Daphne.
Yeah. Just.
Go ahead.
When I appoint somebody, it's for two reasons. It's it's somebody that I think is gonna represent the town well. And it's somebody that um, I always felt like it was a reflection on me. If I reappoint them or I appoint them. Um, then I'm, you know, then I want them to serve in that committee, right? That I'm I'm saying that this this person would serve well. Um, so if um, and if that goes astray, then I still feel like it's my responsibility to. Um, to appoint people that I think are are gonna be good for the town and that's the only, that's the sole reason when I make a decision on that. That's how it's made and that's how I've always done it.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Andy, did the train come back?
Pulled back in, yes. Um. When we uh, if if a department or a department, a committee or board wants to uh, submit a letter to us. My only note would be um, that, you know, rather than one person on the board seek it out just to make sure that uh, it's accessible to everybody.
Sure, for sure. So feedback from a committee relative to an individual?
Yeah, if they were to go that route and and submit a letter, just, you know, I'm I'm sure it would be just.
Yeah.
Making sure we're crystal on it.
And I I think you'll all find that as a chair, you will get all of the information, that there'll be no information that I'll be getting that other folks will not. Um, okay, so.
I didn't mean to imply otherwise.
No, I'm just letting you know. Um, so, thank you for indulging me on this and ready to move on. Okay. So the next one's easy, scheduling and ask me anything. I believe that Mark and I did the last one. So we're gonna stand down on this one. So it's um, I'll leave it up to you fellas.
I'm due.
You're due, okay, that's the other thing is who's.
I'd I'd like to do it as well, and but I will step aside if if Craig, you want to do one.
Do you wanna do one sooner or later?
I don't know, have you guys done one before?
We all have, yeah.
Oh, all right. Um, sh- I mean, I'll 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 do, can three of us do it or is it just gonna be two?
We'll just do two.
Yeah, it's better to be two and actually for nobody else to show up.
Yeah, I won't be showing up. I never have.
Yep, no, thank you.
Okay, so we have Andy is due. Uh, we just, you guys can duke it out.
I I I'm not gonna duke it out. Craig, if you wanna, if you wanna do it, then then do it. If if you don't wanna do it, I'll do the next one. That's fine.
So you're in the basically in the torture chamber for an hour, is that what it is or?
No, no, not at all.
It's actually, it's actually pretty pleasant.
Yeah.
Most of them have been very collegial and people just bring, you know, they they bring issues and questions, but. It's been very civil and and really positive, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we did one at the senior center years ago, which was, which was really good, cause boy, they do their homework down there and they were. You know, they were loaded for bear when we got there. So I I don't, if if you don't mind, Matt, I haven't done one, I'll I'll.
Go for it.
Jump.
All right, thanks, Matt. Okay, so we'll have Andy and Craig on this one and then Matt, you'll be queued up for the next one in the fall.
Perfect.
Okay, and this will be like a summer or?
I'll have Amber reach out to the the two of you and schedule and pick a location.
Perfect.
And then we can just report that back out to the board. I think that's the most efficient way to.
Mm-hmm.
Do it if that's right.
Yep, great. Okay, and then scheduling the next goals workshop. And so thank you for including information on the our previous one. Craig can review that. We met a couple of months ago. Um, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I did speak to uh, Amber, who spoke to the community barn, um, if the board was planning to return to there. Uh, and the two dates in July that they had available um, would be uh, Tuesday, July ninth. Or July twenty-third. And those were selected because they're off weeks of when your normal meeting schedule would would be.
My next two months are up in the air pending other things with like surgery, but. I'm due to be out of the country on the ninth, if I can be, just in to Canada, but if I, I would prefer the twenty-third. But if everyone else can do the ninth, my thing might change anyway, so.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Mark?
Twenty-three is probably better for me. I'll just, I'll just throw my hat in the ring for the twenty-third.
Is that okay with everyone else?
Yeah, it works.
Okay, the twenty-third it is. Great.
Okay.
Cool.
And you guys will schedule the barn?
Sure, I'm not gonna remember tomorrow, but Amber will watch this and.
Yes, thank you, Amber.
Is that for, is that for the um, is that for the ask me anything or is that for the work for the?
No, this will be uh, like a workshop for the goals, so I think included in the packet uh, was information that. Things that we discussed at our last um, meeting, so you can just review that and we'll just try to.
Yeah.
Formalize our goals for the next year and then get them up and going and start working on them. Um, any select board reports?
Um, just quickly, um, I attended a seminar on uh, funding and sort of project options for um. Massachusetts is trying to reduce the amount of railroad crossing uh, issues. But also, there was a. Uh, I think it was a, an MMA seminar anyway, so I'll send that out to the rest of the board. It's, you know. Those projects are difficult and complex as we found out.
Yeah.
But uh, it is something that the the states are aware of and are trying to help towns with, so. It was definitely worth uh, worth an hour anyways.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Um, nothing else here, Craig or Mark?
No.
Okay.
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Pissard, TA report.
Pass.
Okay, status quo?
Yeah, yeah, we know, nothing, well, I've been out six since last meeting, so. Um, I'm still trying to figure out what's what's what.
No problem.
So I will update the board at the next one.
Yep. And will, will we have TA report on next week's?
Yeah, it's on, it's on as a standing, so I'll be, I'll be ready for it.
We'll get it next week.
Yeah.
Um, any correspondence that anyone wants to bring up? No? Okay, we'll move on. There's no resignations. Any general public comments either here in the room or at home via Zoom?
No hands on Zoom.
Okay, and so I will take a motion uh, relative to meeting minutes.
I move the board, Madam Chair, I move the board to vote to approve the meeting minutes for May two. May seven and May thirteenth of twenty twenty-four as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Um, we'll do a roll call. Craig Daphne?
Um, I'm gonna abstain just cause I wasn't a part of those.
Mm-hmm. Mark?
Alamo, aye.
Matt?
Off tonight.
Uh, Andy?
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye, I'm sorry. Okay, the motion carries uh, four in favor and one abstaining and I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Roll call. Craig?
Daphne. Alamo, aye.
Off tonight. Jefferson, aye.
Thank you, Foley, aye. I declare we are adjourned. I'm sorry.